Welcome to the special city council meeting. Time's 6:32. Let's call this meeting to order. Mayor Mark Allen is sick. He contacted me this morning, so he won't be here. Can I get a motion to excuse him, please?
I make a motion to excuse Mayor Allen from today's special meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Councilman Hicks, can you do the invocation for us, please, sir?
Absolutely. Dear Father, thank you today for today, bringing us together to make decisions for our city as we grow. Just keep everyone in your prayers that need you, Mayor, if he's sick, and everybody else that is ill. There's bug going around, so we pray for all of them. We just lift them up to you, Lord. Watch over our first responders and our military personnel and their families in these things we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And there's Councilman Cunningham. All right. Next assistance to be heard. Do we have nobody? All right. And item six, public hearing. Conduct a public hearing to hear public testimony regarding the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget. Time is 6:34.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Roberts and council members. Tonight, myself and Ana Miranda will give a presentation, and council will be going, "We've seen a lot of these slides, but it is the public hearing on the budget following this." You'll have a public hearing on the tax rate, and we think it's important that we still give a presentation on the content of what you will be voting on later tonight. We will also be as concise as possible. So let me begin. After the slides that I cover, Ana Miranda will step up and give the rest of the presentation. And we will get that PowerPoint up. First, I want to start off, as I have done each and every year, and that is to recognize that the budget process is a team sport. It takes multiple stakeholders to come together, to work through multiple workshops across months, to come up to the moment that we have here tonight. So I want to thank council. You made yourself available across multiple meetings. As a slide in a bit will show, there were six public meetings that you held to form this budget, and we conducted one town hall. Plus, you did your strategic management workshop, which is really the kickoff to this entire process. Here are a few highlights of what you will see tonight in this presentation and really in your budget. City council and city staff have developed a budget that's fiscally disciplined, service-minded, and laser-focused on capital projects that align with our master plans, council's strategic plan, and our community priorities. Leadership development. This budget reflects an investment in our employees, both their professional development with a new leadership academy that's included within the budget by in-house staff, as well as professional development through various means across all service areas. It also includes a move to market for our remaining employees after the city moved our first responders to market last year and essential personnel in public works. This allows our staff to be more capable to serve our community and become stronger professionals. Regional collaboration. We are continuing to grow connections with surrounding agencies to maximize our local dollars so that the city of Siblo provides high-quality services. From 911 dispatch to ambulatory services, fire response in surrounding area, utility billing coordination, all of these help serve our residents and our businesses while maximizing our local dollars. And there are big things to come. We're upgrading our existing parks, starting with Veterans Park and Nimitz Park, this year, with construction to happen over the next several months. We have been seeking community input on these two parks across the summer, and we will be bringing forward plans in the coming months for presentations to the city council. The five-year capital improvement plan shows that we will invest in all existing parks by 2030. And that's in addition to the capital improvements to our streets, our utilities, and our drainage features. And also, this budget reflects the fiscal stewardship that we have had in our budget process over the past several years. The city's credit rating was upgraded to AA+, which is a direct reflection of our fiscal stewardship, strategic planning, and execution on our infrastructure planning. I'm going to say, here's a list of four of firsts over the next four years. This is a bridge, if you will, FY '26, to the next four years. In the next four years, the city will achieve the construction and opening of an animal services facility, which the voters approved in the November 2024 election. That was Prop. A. We will construct and open a public safety facility along Bolton Road, which is our I-10 corridor. It's a fire station, number four. It's a police substation, and it will have an ambulance station at that facility. We will touch and improve all existing parks. For the first time in our history, our existing parks will be upgraded. We'll have a new wastewater CCN service area with pipes in the ground that are connected to actual development that will contribute to the cost. Street maintenance annual funding in FY '26 is $750,000, but within the next four years, we'll be spending $1 million a year maintaining our streets so that our pavement condition is high-quality. And that's a far cry from the $125,000 that I found when I first started here. We will have an accredited police department in the next four years. We will have an accredited fire department in the next four years. We will have an accredited public works department in the next four years. Ana Miranda hasn't had this, but our goal in the next four years is to improve our credit rating to AAA. We can achieve all of these and many more over the next four years, starting with this You've seen the major steps. These are all the meetings you've had. What is not reflected here, but it is reflected on your cover sheet, is that you also, on July 8th, had a workshop before your regular meeting, and in that workshop, you discussed the fund balance and the employee market compensation and a cost of living adjustment. At the regular meeting on July 8th, you gave us direction on revising the fund balance policy. You gave us direction on the market adjustment and COLA, and you also gave us direction on the five-year CIP for fleet replacement. Again, that's on your cover sheet. But this right here shows the six meetings that you've held, the one town hall, plus your strategic management workshop. And all of that, through this team effort, has led us to this moment. So before I go here, I've made my thanks and given my thanks to all of you for what you have done to get us here. But I need to pause and also thank the executive team that is here, the executive team that is not here. I want to thank every employee who was asked to play a role, if you will, step on the field, an analogy to sports, and we've asked them to play a part in building this structurally-balanced budget for our community. And so I am very grateful for each and every one of you that had a hand in developing this budget. Mayor Protem and council, I don't intend on spending much time talking about these, but for our public, I want them to see the sequence of events that led up to tonight. So you had a budget workshop in June. That was your first. You had a second budget workshop in July. On July 15th, a budget workshop. We talked about these items. At July 31st, it was a special meeting, and you talked about the tax rate and the general At the August 12th meeting, you approved proposing the maximum tax rate for the required publication, and you also were given the city manager's proposed budget, had some discussion. You continued that discussion on September 9th. And this right here shows what we have done. Since September 9th, we did amend, and you'll see this in the presentation that Ms. Miranda will continue to give, that we increased the funding for the senior program by $2,000. That is in your budget. We reduced specific line items in the city council budget, but did, had a net zero effect. We put those $8,000 in a separate line item, and as you said, it's discretionary spending that you will approve for your city commissions and committees. We reduced the level of funding for the tri-county chamber membership to $650. Yes, sir?
Eight thousand. It was discretionary spending for the commission, but it's not just the...
And because it's the city council budget, my description, if it's too narrow, you will be able to spend those $8,000 the way that you want to. I think the point that I heard really is that a committee or a commission would really have to make that request of council, and council would say, "We'll take 2,000," making this number up, "out of your 8,000." Mr. Hicks, to your point, if council decides to spend any portion of that $8,000 on something else, it is your, it remains your discretion. Yes, sir. Also, we have posted on the website all the materials from the town hall, so we have put that on the same webpage that has the proposed FY '26 budget. We also provided a document in the packet tonight that breaks down the police positions by service area, and I had put up on the dais to explain that distribution. So the budget book on page 145 lists the police department by position, but it doesn't break it out by service area. Ms. Miranda, taking the direction from council, revised it on a one-page handout that shows the same police department listing of positions, and there's 52.75, and then broke it out by service area. And I want to point out, police officers that are in the budget book are not exclusive to patrol officers. So let me explain how we have 25 police officers. There is one in administration, and so if you're looking at this 11 by 17, and I just did crude, I used a red pen and just did this really fast, it shows that there's one police officer in the administration. There are four in the criminal investigations division. There are 19 in the patrol division, and there is one in our traffic division. When you add all those up, those police officers amount to 25. And so, council, this is the follow-up that we've had since September 9th, and I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Miranda at this point, unless you have a question of me.
You had mentioned something in regards to leadership, and it was funded for the leadership, for the executive team?
For employees.
For employees, yes. Okay, thank you. But you said that was a funded, is that in the training side of that's funded, or how, where is that funded? Because I don't remember seeing that.
So there's actually no additional funding because it's in-house.
Okay.
By having your executive team and the leadership in the executive team, Brian Huggins created a leadership academy that we started earlier this year. We're in the second cohort right now, but that's our investment in our employees. And so I should have said, without additional funding, we are conducting a leadership academy in addition to the professional development that you all have supported in this budget. So I misspoke in saying there's funding for it, because the only money we spend on it is printing the material, Mr. Huggins' time, and the time of our people managers that we've identified as our leaders in our organization that are in this cohort. Thank you for asking, and I appreciate the opportunity to clarify that.
As Mr. Reed mentioned, a lot of this information will be repetitive to you. Welcome back, Mr. McGlaughlin. We'll start with an all-funds overview. The total all-funds overview for the city budget was delivered on August 12th to city council. All combined funds totaled $72.03 million at that time. Operating funds, which include the general fund, utility fund, the drainage fund, and the development services fund, total $49.3 million. Debt service funds, just over $8 million, and $14.75 million for all other funds, which is the EDC, and 18 special revenue funds. Since August 12th, following city council feedback on September 9th, the general fund was decreased by $2,600, and special revenue funds increased by $49,000 for a grant awarded in late August. So we did add $49,000 to both revenue and expense in special revenue funds. Total combined funds after these revisions is $72.08 million, a net change of $46,400. The general fund overview is typically the highlight of our budget meetings, and it's where our general fund, our MNO taxes, are deposited. So this first slide was added. It's general fund expenses as presented throughout the budget process. Question was raised at our September 9th meeting related to the reductions taken over the course of the budget process, and this slide shows a comparison of the general fund expenses from our first budget presentation on June 17th to our last presentation on August 12th. As we pointed out at each of the budget meetings, the general fund continued to be a work-in-progress as we refined revenues and finalized expenses. At the first budget workshop in that first column, total general fund expense of $25.1 million included mandatory increases, but did not yet include COLA and market adjustments for personnel. At the second budget workshop, we presented a budget that did include those expenses. They were incorporated by refining revenue projections and asking departments to reduce discretionary spending. Total expenses as presented in the second budget workshop in July were approximately $25 million, which was a reduction of approximately $100,000. At the July 31st special meeting, we committed to further reductions, and on August 12th, presented a budget of $24.9 million for expenses, which was a further reduction of $100,000. These are the slides that you have seen before, and it shows a comparison of general fund revenue. We want to point out that fiscal year '26 projected revenues are approximately $1.6 million, or 7.2% over the prior year. Of that increase, general taxes and franchise fees increased by approximately $1.35 million. And to break that down further, general taxes include property taxes, sales taxes, and our franchise fees. Property taxes are increasing by approximately 4%, or $750,000 in the general fund. Sales taxes, increasing by $350,000, and the remaining $250,000 is an increase in franchise fees. And these make up the largest variances from the prior year. In addition, other increased revenue in fiscal year '26 is a result of an increase in park field, park, field, and facility rental fees, and an increase in franchise fees from the utility funds from 3% to 4%. These are offset by an elimination of chip or service fees and a decrease in credit card fees that were applicable to development services activities. General fund expenses, as we mentioned, $24.9 million. They're approximately $1.7 million, similar to the revenue increase, or 7.2% more than the prior year. And this slide shows the increase by category with an increase in salaries and benefits to cover impacts of market study adjustments effective January of '25 for public safety and public works, and proposed adjustments for all other employees to be effective January of 2026. The 5.1% increase in services is primarily related to IT maintenance contracts and telecommunications increases. The increase in capital is related to technology replacements that were taken from other funds in prior years, and the increase in financing payments is related to a full-year cost of vehicles replaced this year. Ending fund balance of $5.9 million is approximately 27.4% of recurring expenses. And when we say recurring expenses, that does not include fully-funded programs like the SRO program, which is funded by the school district, and costs reimbursed by other funds or one-time costs. The general fund is structurally balanced and financially sustainable. Recurring expenses are covered by recurring revenues. One-time costs of approximately $393,000 were identified in the budget and are funded by a reduction in fund balance. The general fund dollar allocation shows how our money is spent, how each dollar of our revenues are spent in the general fund. This shows that 56 cents of every dollar funds public safety, police, and fire. 23 cents funds our administrative offices, which include eight divisions, including city councils, city secretary, city manager's office, HR, finance, IT, communications, and then non-departmental budgets, which the non-departmental budget supports all departments. 16 cents of every dollar funds public works in the general fund, which is parks, streets, and administration. And 5 cents of every dollar funds animal services, code enforcement, municipal court, and economic development combined. Over 95% of the $1.7 million increase for fiscal year '26 is in public safety, public works, and administration, and details continue on the next slides. This chart depicts a revenue breakdown and the expense breakdown by category, like classification. Revenue breakdown for the general fund is 51% of our revenues do come from property taxes, 24% from sales tax, 14% come from intergovernmental and transfers, 7% is franchise fee, and 4% is all others. This funds a $24.9 million budget, of which almost 70% is salaries and benefits. So our general fund is, as you are aware, people-based, service-based. Services, utilities, and training make up 14% of our expense budget. Supplies, repairs are 6%, and other expenses, which include our inter-local agreements and EDC incentives, for example, make up 7% of our budget. So the mandatory increases that we've talked about throughout the budget process is, on this slide shown on this slide, the increased costs are $1.95 million. These were offset by decreases in other costs, which offset the $1.95 million, showing the $1.7 million that increased in the general fund. 70% of the increase is the first five bullet points, which are related to personnel costs. Market studies, COLA compensation, overtime, healthcare, and reduction in ARPA funds all impacted our personnel budget. The debt service fund is supported by the INS portion of the property tax rate, and this fund accounts for the payments of principal and interest on the city's outstanding debt. Principal and interest total $8 million for fiscal year '25, 5% of annual payments at approximately $1.4 million. The development services fund is a new fund that was created last year. It accounts for activity and planning and construction activity throughout the city. Our fiscal year '25 original budget was calculated on the average activity over the last several years. Due to the downturn in construction activity earlier in the year, our revised estimate for fiscal year '25 is approximately 67% of the original budget. And the fiscal year '26 budget has been projected more conservatively at 85% of the average. Revenues are projected to exceed expenses of the fund, establishing a positive fund balance in this new fund. The fiscal year '26 development service budget includes $23,000 for market adjustments and 2% COLA, and compensation adjustments would be applied in January. This chart reflects annual totals for new home permits. While fiscal year '25 has been somewhat slower than other years, we do expect recovery in the next 12 months. This is approximately 67% of the average over the last 12 years. This chart shows more detail reflecting permits by month over the last three years. This reflects March through June at higher levels of activity than the first five months of the fiscal year in the teal-colored bar chart. The water wastewater utility fund is an enterprise fund. Enterprise funds are used to account for services provided to customers through user charges. They should be considered self-supporting and be fully supported by those user charges. Some highlights for fiscal year '26 include funding of the rate study that we've talked about. Utility rate study is well underway, and we expect to present results to city council in October. Recommended rate increases will be considered by city council for implementation in January. The fiscal year '26 budget does include a 2% rate adjustment on wastewater rates as a pass-through for the 2% rate increase by CCMA. I want to note that the fiscal year '26 budget includes a $1 million set aside for future water acquisition to replace crystal clear water, and $100,000 for a consultant that specializes in water topics. The set aside for $1 million is not anticipated to be spent in fiscal year '26, but will be maintained in fund balance for future water acquisition. The budget also includes a change in the franchise fees. For water and wastewater services, a franchise fee to the general fund will be 4% of revenues in fiscal year '26. Additionally, under the new solid waste franchise agreement, large commercial contracts will be managed and billed by Waste Connections. The 10% franchise fee will be retained by the general fund. And for residential customers and small commercial accounts, city staff will continue to prepare those billing statements, and so 40% of the franchise fee will be retained by the utility fund, and 60% will go to the general fund. The fiscal year '26 budget includes $24,000 for market compensation and COLA adjustments beginning in January. Looking at the summary for the water wastewater fund, revenues are projected to decrease by 1.6% from the prior year. This is a reflection of the change in the solid waste franchise agreement. As previously mentioned, revenues from dumpsters and compactors will no longer be reflected in the utility fund due to Waste Connections billing those customers directly. In addition to the $100,000 for water consultant already mentioned, other increases in services include a $200,000 payment to CCMA for the first tranche of debt that council approved, I believe, two meetings ago, to be issued in fiscal year '26 in furtherance of the south plant expansion, and $49,000 for drought contingency and water conservation plan update. We're projecting $19.1 million in revenue and $19.9 million in total expenses. This budget anticipates a $785,000 decrease in our fund balance to account for the $1 million set aside for water acquisition. Despite this, our ending fund balance is projected to be $9.2 million, which is approximately 48% of total revenues. The 2% rate increase that we are proposing for wastewater will impact the average city customer by 71 cents a month. The average winter wastewater consumption across our residential customer class is 6,000 gallons, and so that rate change is reflected in the chart, in the table in front of you, at 71 cents monthly. CRWA submitted their initial budget for '26 in July. Based on the initial draft budget, they were set to increase their expenses by 21%. They did make some adjustments to that in August, and the final budget is within our estimated budget. We should see some savings from what was first proposed. CCMA, this did come in front of council, I believe, two weeks ago, in the last month. Approval of the design costs... Approval of the design cost and the bond issuance for the first tranche of debt. It did come in lower than anticipated and so the impact will be less than what is shown on this slide. We'll update that when we have the additional information on the estimates for the second tranche of bonds. Our first payment on the design portion will be in fiscal year '26. The drainage utility district, no fee changes have been proposed. Our fiscal year '26 budget includes 12,000 for a 2% COLA and an increased franchise fee to the general fund from 3% to 4% of revenues. It also includes additional funding for engineering services to evaluate drainage flow to detention pond at the public works facility and a drawdown of fund balance for capital equipment, specifically the street sweeper shown on this slide. This budget is structurally balanced. You can see that fiscal year '26 revenues of 1.7 million are less than total expenses of 1.8. Capital outlay is shown at 250,000 for that TIMCO sweeper and that provides the decrease in fund balance, which is for one-time costs. The Economic Development Corporation, this is a 4B corporation, not only authorized to fund projects related to industrial development in the furtherance of primary jobs, but can also fund quality of life improvement projects, including infrastructure improvement. The corporation is funded by a quarter cent sales tax, which was first authorized by the voters in November 2006. And the chart highlights sales tax growth over the last 20 years. The first full year of sales tax totaled 118,000 and has grown to more than 12 times that. Highlights of the fiscal year '26 budget include continued growth in our sales tax, projected at 7% over the current year. New grant opportunities for small business, specifically the EDGE Grant, which stands for Economic Development for Growth and Enhancement. It's similar to the BIG grant but adds additional opportunities for reimbursement of fees and other circumstances. The fiscal year '26 budget increases the grant opportunities by 25,000 over the prior year. It also funds 100,000 for strategic plan implementation. Those master agreements have been put in place by the EDC to begin the work on the strategic plan. And the EDC budget also includes 250,000 for a parks master plan. Year over year, we have added to fund balance in the EDC. Fiscal year '26 budget projects revenues of 1.5 million and expenses of 1.2 million, which will continue to add to the fund balance, bringing the projected year in total to 3.1 million. Special revenue funds account for funds that are legally restricted for specific uses. We budget for 18 of these. For example, Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund. Receiving those types of funds, they can only be spent for specific purposes related to tourism. Impact fee funds can only be used for capital projects related to the impacts of development. All of these funds show a beginning balance going into fiscal year '26 of 23.6 million. 90% of that is in impact fees and street maintenance tax. And we'll talk about those in a little more detail. Wanted to point out the change, the increase in total revenue and expenses in the grants fund. In the line shown, it's the third line down, Grants Fund, beginning balance of $435. We typically do want to see all these funds spent and so there's not a requirement on holding a fund balance. Everything that comes in is restricted for a specific purpose. There's no reason to hold on to those funds. The anticipation is to suspend them all. So we budgeted for 633,000 in revenue and 633,000 in expense. That is an increase, as I mentioned, of 49,000 from the last time that city council reviewed this table and that is for the Office of the Governor Grant Award for 49,000 for partial funding of a victim services coordinator position within the police department. Street Maintenance Fund, fiscal year, this is supported by a quarter cent sales tax as well as the EDC fund. Our estimated sales tax for fiscal year '26 is 1.46 million, which is a 7% increase over the prior year. This will fund our debt service on our 2020 certificates of obligation for 865,000, increasing to 1.1 million in fiscal year '29 and fiscal year '30. Fiscal year '30 is the final payment on those bonds. Sales tax growth of 5%, if we estimate it a 5% growth in sales tax annually, that would support an average of 650,000 in street maintenance over the next five years, which will increase to 1.5 million after debt is retired in fiscal year '30. Impact fee funds, the amounts in blue are what would be available as of October 1st of fiscal year '26. $23.7 million in impact fees. And we expect to appropriate 8.5% of that for the Tolly Road project in fiscal year '26. 2 million for wastewater extension project from the Venado lift station to Hakerville Road and 650,000 committed to a trail system in the parks, in the parkland fees. An impact fee study is currently underway by Fries and Nichols and we would anticipate bringing that back next year, next calendar year, February, March timeframe to city council. The Civilo Public Facility Corporation has a balance of approximately 2.5 million after funding the acquisition and renovation of the community center. From the 2.5 million balance and interest earnings, the fiscal year '25 end-of-year estimate includes 3,600 for parks and recreation commission events. And the fiscal year '26 budget includes 250,000 for Phase 2 renovations, 3,000 for parks and recreation events and 50,000 for neighborhood traffic management program. Ending fund balance is projected to be 2.2 million, available for future one-time costs. And I think that covers the bulk of everything that is in your, that is in the fiscal year '26 proposed budget. And we would ask that you open the public hearing to hear any concerns or comments or support from citizens.
All right. We'll open the public hearing at 7:11. If anybody'd like to comment or speak on the proposed budget. Do you want to like to speak on the item B tax rate for tax year 2025? You would just do the one first, okay?
So you have to close that one.
All right.
Mayor Protem, if nobody wants to speak, as Ms. Simics just said, you can close this public hearing.
We'll close the public hearing 7:12 PM. All right, let's go to item 6B.
Are these working? Do the NQ where you request to speak, do you get that popped up on yours? Okay. I don't know if I speak.
Go ahead.
I don't know if y'all are aware of this, but Tuesday we were awarded one of the patrol cars that Santa Clara was getting. We will be getting one of their Durangos and Shirts will be getting the other one because they have closed out their marshal's office. So they awarded them to Civilo and Shirts, just so y'all know. But it didn't come, I guess somehow, it was a grant, but it was the Durangos, not the...
Yes, sir, Councilman Hicks is correct. We just, the chief pender gave us a call Wednesday and told us that the vehicle will be ours. We'll be going over to the county tomorrow to take a look at it and figure out upfitting costs. But we certainly appreciate, thank you if you had anything to do with it.
That's good news.
Thought it was important that everybody knew that we were going to get another patrol car to add to our fleet.
That is good news. Thank you. We do have a second public hearing tonight and that's the public hearing on the tax rate. So I do have a presentation for the public. You guys have heard this before, so bear with me. This is much shorter presentation than the one you just heard. Guadalupe, our budget, let me start. Our budget property tax process starts with receiving preliminary estimated values from Guadalupe County Appraisal District. Preliminary values were received in April and they were certified by the Guadalupe Appraisal District on July 25th. And that's when we receive them and the tax assessor receives them from the appraisal district. The county tax assessor then makes the truth in taxation calculations. The form calculates the no new revenue tax rate and the voter approval tax rate. Notice of that tax rate must be published on the city's website by August 7th, which did occur. It is what did occur this year. I also want to note that the average taxable home value decreased by 3.8% from 350,000 to 337,000. This slide shows a 10-year history of net taxable values in Civilo as of the date of certification. Property values are constantly changing throughout the year and they produce supplements to the tax rules, reflecting changes in ownership, reflecting changes in exemptions and things like that. So it's constantly fluctuating, but as of the time of certification, that's what this chart reflects. The years following COVID had steeper growth. The housing market increases combined with growth in our commercial and industrial base during those years led to double-digit growth. And with higher inflation and interest rates, where currently market values in residential properties have decreased, leading to the decrease this current year. This shows our taxable assessed values by category. Residential, multifamily, commercial, industrial and other. And it does show an increase for each of the categories except for residential. The big blue chart is residential and it decreased from 80% of our total values to 76.3%. And our commercial, industrial made up for that difference. So as mentioned earlier, with higher inflation and interest rates, market values in residential properties decreased throughout the city by 5%. That combined with an increase in property tax exemptions of 7.3% decreased the taxable value of residential property by 7.4%. Taxable values of multifamily, commercial and industrial properties all increased in line with their market value increases. So with this information, the tax assessor collector prepared the tax rate calculations. The no new revenue rate, or NNR, is the tax rate which produces the same amount of tax revenue if applied to the same properties in both tax years. And that is calculated at .500550, .05 cents. The voter approval tax rate is calculated, is the calculated sum of the NNR for maintenance and operations plus 3.5% plus the calculated debt service rate. It can be adjusted by unused increment in any year that the taxing entity adopts a rate lower than the previous VAR. The calculated NNR for fiscal year '26, sorry, the VAR is 52.26 cents, which is 2.36 cents over the current rate. And that is what our fiscal year '26 budget is proposed on. Everybody would like to know what the tax rate impact is to them. Specifically, what we have is the average home value. So at the voter approval tax rate, the average homestead's tax increase is $13.78 annually, which is less than a 1% net impact. This is what was published in the newspaper as the impact to the average home payer, the average taxpayer. If the no new revenue rate had been implemented, the average homestead would see a $60 decrease in taxes from the current year, thanks to the reduced homestead values. The difference between the two rates is approximately $75 annually. The total tax rate is made up of two components and has to be adopted that way. So the maintenance and operations rate that we are proposing is 33.81 cents and the debt service rate is 18.45 cents. This slide reflects the property tax revenue in each fund at the proposed voter approval tax rate and how it compares to what has been budgeted. So it's all within 98.7% of the levy, which is what our collection rate is. The notice that was required to be published at least five days prior to today's hearing was published on September 7th. It was a quarter-page notice in the Siggin Gazette, not in the legal or classified section. And this is what that looked like. The information provides the proposed rate, the no new revenue rate, the voter approval rate and who voted for and against the proposal. It also provides the impact to the average taxpayer. Adopting a tax rate that exceeds a no new rate must be a separate vote from the budget, must be a record vote and at least 60% of the members of the governing body must vote in favor of the ordinance. The ordinance has to have, the ordinance on our website has to have specific language and the motion has to be made in a specific format. After adoption of the tax rate, our ordinance and website must also reflect any increase that was adopted. And again, I'll ask that we open a public hearing for citizens that want to speak on the tax rate.
Time is 7:21, open public hearing on the tax rate for tax year 2025.
Can I speak, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Pam Harrison and you all know me. I'm here to ask you not to pass this tax increase. You all took an oath to work for the people of Civilo. This is not happening. You didn't stop and think, their water's going up, the garbage went up, school taxes are going up and you want to impose a 5.2 tax increase. That is not fair to the citizens of Civilo. That is not working for them at all. With the economy today, this is going to devastate many, many families. You know, I'm safe, I'm frozen. But I've talked to many families in this community that this is really going to hurt. A 5.2 is just under where you didn't have to go to the voters for approval. I hope in good conscience, consciousness that you will not vote this tax rate and put bailout, it sounds like a bailout to me, and put the burden on the citizens of Civilo. This is not working for them. This is working against them. And that's all I have to say and if you vote this in, I hope you sleep well. well, because this is hurting them. Thank you.
Discussion action number seven. Item A, approve, disapprove the 2% cost of living adjustment COLA had described in the fiscal year 26.
I need to recuse myself on this, this item, please.
Okay.
I also had a question. Um, is this, is this something that is typically done where you vote on the COLA before you actually approve the budget and the tax increase? Because I believe the way that it stands right now, we, um, I don't know, would our budget support currently, you know, the 2% if we're relying on the, uh, tax rate approval in order to do that?
Um, so, uh, you're doing this separately because we do have a council member who has a conflict with the 2% COLA, so we separated that out from your vote on the budget. If you approve a tax rate, to get to your, uh, question, that is less than the voter approval tax rate, for every one penny less than 52.26, it's a reduction in revenue of approximately $350,000. So we would make effectively for a tax rate, if it is less than 52.26, we will make cuts in the budget equivalent to the lower tax rate that you adopt and the re, lower revenue associated with that. So the process in which you go about adopting things is you first adopt a budget, and then you move to the tax rate. So if the tax rate is not 52.26, then we would come back to the council to show you where we cut the budget to come in line with the tax rate and the revenue that the tax rate generates.
Would it have made any difference to have, um, done the COLA after you approved the budget or the tax rate? Just because it, it just makes, it's just common sense that you approve a new budget with a new increase in order to afford the additional, rather than putting the cart before the horse?
Um, the COLA itself, um, is not the only thing that would have to be cut from the budget should you approve a tax rate less than 52.26. So, uh, I don't perceive the COLA as the issue. I perceive that if you adopt a tax rate between the no new revenue rate and the voter approval tax rate, we will have to come back to council to show where we cut. Would a COLA be cut? That might be one area in which we do cut the, uh, in expenses to bring a budget in line with a lower tax rate. But the COLA itself is not the issue. It's whatever the tax rate is and the impact in revenue.
Okay. I, I just, it just doesn't make common sense to approve one without actually approving the other first to guarantee that you'd have that, but...
In the state of Texas, the way in which you go about the approval of your budget and your tax rate is you have to approve the budget first, and then you approve the tax rate.
Right. Are we able to, um, well, if you agree, Katie, just as well, can we put the, can we move the others up and then appropriately do the one, other one afterwards?
I don't know what the, the legal order is if we can do that. I say, I was just agreeing that, I know logically it doesn't make sense. It would make sense that you would approve the tax rate to say we have X amount of dollars before approving a budget for that amount of dollars. Doing it in the converse, which is what I think you're trying to say is we're approving something for money that we haven't approved a tax rate for yet. And so I unders, I understand the logic in that. I do know that other cities do it this way where they approve the budget first. I don't know why. Um, it just is the, the process, but if there is a state requirement, a, a state requirement that we do it this way, then we do it this way. If there's an option to switch it around, I don't know. That would be a legal...
I would, go ahead, Anna.
The budget does have to be, um, adopted first. You can only adopt a tax rate to support a budget.
So, uh, Mayor, Pro Tem and Council, so if the tax rate is, uh, that is adopted is less, is less than the 52.26, you can ask for the, uh, COLA to come back on this very agenda, right? You could say, I'd like to reconsider the COLA. Uh, you could also say, I'd like to rediscuss the budget. The discussion would be, we're gonna do math on what the reduced revenue is, and the conversation would be, you would direct me to find X amount of expenses to be reduced in the budget, and I would bring back a budget at the next meeting for you to approve a budget with less, lower expenditures.
I make a motion to approve 7A.
Second. All right. Passes 5-1 with one recused vote.
I would just like to say that it, in my opinion, in my logic, it would have been better to have done the converse first in order to see what we have. That, I just wanted to mention that.
I think the reason, it just with what Ms. Miranda just said, it kind of clicked. You cannot approve a tax rate without having a reason for it, and so that's why we have to have a budget approved first, because the budget says, here's what we're gonna spend the money on, um, and what we've agreed to spend the money on, so now we're doing the tax rate. I know it's backwards because in other instances, we do the opposite, but when it comes to this, that's how the law is, and sometimes the law just doesn't make sense.
And, and if I could for the council, right, we are not bringing this to you for the first time. You gave us direction to base the budget on 52.26, but yet it relies upon you voting to approve that tax rate, so. But I, I agree with how Ms. Cunningham put that in simple language. That was well said.
All right. Moving on to 8A ordinances. Approval of ordinance of the city of Siblo adopting the budget for fiscal year 2025 through 2026, beginning October 1, 2025 and ending September 30th, 2026.
No, no presentation, just council discussion, and then at the time, a motion.
I just wanted to thank staff for putting all the work into the budget. I know we came back multiple times and asked you to cut more, and we kept asking for more and more cuts. Um, it's challenging. I know from personal experience, it's challenging to cut a budget and to ask for those things. It's been tight in every level of government recently with increased costs, with all of the challenges that we have, and then with natural disasters and everything else that pops up that's unexpected. So I appreciate you all putting in the work and kind of working on the fly sometimes, even during meetings when we're like, how much would it be if you cut this? Um, so I just wanted to put that out there that I, your work is seen and it's valued. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I guess I would like to go ahead and weigh in also regarding the budget itself. I know this past, uh, summer, when we first were approached about our revenues and our expenses, and there was concern over the, uh, property values coming in lower and the exemptions also coming in higher. We were given some options of where we could land, let's say as a maximum tax rate, and, um, and just looking at that, I, our no new revenue rate would have, had had a short in revenues about $788,967. And, um, so with the majority of the council, it was approved to have it at .5205, and it, the way that I see, oh, sorry, 5226, which it showed in the revenues that there would still be a slight shortfall of $250. What I wanted to say with this is that, um, generally, whenever you have a corporation, whenever you have a reduction or a shortfall of revenues, you generally don't, uh, go out and increase salaries, per se. Usually there is more budget cuts. We were looking for, one thing that I also wanted back from, uh, staff and I did not receive is the midpoint amounts from, uh, Universal City and from Converse. So I felt that with the market rate adjustment just as well, we did not have all of the information, at least I did not have all of my information. It kept, it was still noted in a lot of the memorandums that that information was gonna come back, and it never came back. So we really don't know what the surrounding settings, cities are currently doing. And another thing that I think this, what happens is that it causes our cities to continuously to compete against one another. So many times when we're actively increasing, uh, salaries, it causes us to lose, uh, employees to one another. And at some point is, are we shooting for the highest midpoint so that, uh, we can, so that, i- is it, is it actually a fair midpoint? Because I feel usually, you know, when I used to do mortgage loans and you used to get comparables for a house and how much it's worth, you would get some low-end ones and you would get some higher-end ones, and that way you have a variance, and that way you come up to your praise value. In this particular instance, we had Shirts, we had Live Oak, we had Selma, we had Bernie as midpoints to look to, and I felt that we really didn't have that variance to see, because if we are in the negative of $788,967, 788,967, I, I just kind of feel that we're, we're looking at this and thinking about this is gonna go away. So what were we do, gonna go away? So what were we doing actively every year to anticipate this time when property values were gonna go down? So it, that for me is like, this is why I feel that we, we have the professionals here to forecast these things, and this is not the first time. Back in 2008, 2010, we all experienced property value drops. That was just 17 years ago. So it's not like this came out of nowhere that we're so surprised that the property values came down. We have been through this cycle before when property values have increased, and then they've gone down. Right at a time when we have been asking, I have been asking, other council members have been asking for a, a aggressive, um, uh, outreach on economic development. What I have seen in the last couple, my short tenure is that the development has come to us, but we, I haven't seen that development have been sought out and brought in. You know, it, what a great thing to have had Buffalo Heights. What a great thing for the developer to have brought in Siblo Crossing. What a great thing. If, if I recall, I think the last thing that maybe was brought in was maybe Eishen in 2021. But I just don't feel like we have taking, we haven't taken the opportunities to really go out there and see what can we do to bring up that sales tax revenue to help offset this tax burden to our residents, because ultimately, we are the ones bearing that burden, and for some, you know, $18, $13, I don't know, it's been like several, for several different figures at this point, you know, that'll cost every year, but guess what? Our water rates are gonna go up in January. I'm sorry, but there are people out there who aren't even getting a 2% COLA, but somehow taxpayer money is bailing out and always getting salary increases. And at the cost, at, at whose cost? At the cost of the resident. I, 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 when I ran for office, I, I had, I had it in mind and a mission to keep the resident first, the resident first. And that's what I feel, I still, I still want to do that. I, even with these, going through the budget, I felt I came up here and I was asking, how much more can we give back to the residents? How much can we give to our resident volunteers who are on boards and commissions? Funding the N, NTMP, I, I brought that up. Those are the things that I, I want to see what's in it for the residents here, and, and don't say, oh, well, the EMS, granted, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and get that EMS. That is a right that they have to, they have to have pub, they have to have services for these things. So when it comes to a shortfall, the shortfall, i- it does feel like we're pretty much bailing out, for the lack of a better word, right? We're bailing this budget out, trying to get that balance, and I'm just kind of wondering, how is it gonna look next year? What are we doing to forecast next year if, let's say, we have another hit of, guess what? The developers, there's just really no permits. There's really no new housing. The market hasn't really actually moved. We're gonna come back again and increase the tax rate again? So because another thing that I know that residents actually want, they want a fully-staffed fire department, four man per shift. We want more patrol officers out on the streets because the streets are busy. You go out there on a given day, people are not at work. They're shopping, they're working remotely, there's homeschoolers, there's retired residents. They are out and about, HEB, Walmart, everywhere, and then our poor patrol officers, 19 patrol officers. And sometimes if they have to go on vacation or if they're sick, then guess what? It's a, it's a smaller shift. And I can only imagine their mental health, their exhaustion, right? All of that. When there's a, 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 a police officer who, who's no longer with us because we experienced that last, this past year, we experienced two, right? Fire department and police department. The strain that that, that imposes on our, on our departments themselves. I kind of, I wondered, is that shift gonna get, is that PD shift gonna get relieved so they can at least grieve their comrade? Did that even happen?
It did happen.
Did, okay, thank you for that reassurance, but, but do you also see...
We had help from neighboring agencies.
And that is great that we can receive the help from other neighboring agencies, but here's what I also see. We should not depend on the neighbors, our neighbors, on their taxpayer dollar-funded police department, and I feel like we have, we, we do that quite a bit. And I, I'm not sure that the police department doesn't mind in shirts. They don't mind at all, because y'all have a great partnership and great relationship, but I kind of feel, but yet the shirts residents are paying for their police department, and then they're helping us. So these are just concerns that I have over this budget itself, is that what is in it for the resident, residents? We haven't had any additional patrol officers, increased patrol officers, shifts, five to seven possibly, and I have asked this before. I've not been shy about saying, you know, wh- when are we gonna start looking at a strategic plan of every year? How, how are we gonna add more police officers on patrol? And I'm not picking on the police department at all, because I also would like to see our public works department also fully staffed, more, more staff, especially since we're gonna get that trailhead, the parks, and I've also expressed this to Julio, and he knows. I'm like, I'm trying to figure out ways to, even if it's part-time positions, so we can avoid having to do benefits, like how can we fully fund? Because we are here for the residents ultimately, but then the residents are having to pay the cost, pay the increases in our trash, in our utilities, in our water, and all of that, and then our tax rate. So I just, uh, I, I just want to make those few comments. This has nothing, and I do want to thank city staff. Thank you for all the work that you put into, because I couldn't even have come to these conclusions myself, my point of view, my perspective, without you bringing the numbers here. So I just want to say thank you to all of you. Thank you for the grind that you put in every single day. This is nothing against, um, this isn't personal at all. This is just keeping the resident in mind, because that is something that I had, um, given my word to do, that I was gonna be here for the residents. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, um, I do want you to know that, uh, we are here for the residents first also, and I want to remind, uh, council that the, um, compensation increases that, that you approved last year and that the voters approved by, by voting for the tax rate, that is for the citizens. That helps us recruit and retain quality personnel in our police and fire and throughout the city, and we completely agree that we are short in many departments, and, and we will continue to, you know, this budget didn't propose any new staff because it is a lean budget, but we have to retain the staff that we have, and, uh, the way we're doing that is through this market study and 2% cost of living adjustment. And so, uh, as mentioned throughout this process, our general fund is 70% people, and so the services that we provide to keep our residents a priority, to be able to serve our residents at a high level of service, it means retaining quality employees.
Thank you for that, Ms. Miranda. I think, and I do agree with you on that. I think in this particular budget, the only thing is, is that I didn't have the additional information for those other cities that I had requested, and it's been the entire summer, and I don't know what that actually could have looked like, to have even asked further questions. It was additional information that was not provided.
Uh, this is something that our HR department, I know, has been working on, and our market study is, uh, probably not 100% complete. It's gotta be reviewed with all of the department heads. It won't go into effect until January, and we can bring back information to city council for that.
Right. Um, I'll own that. I do remember that we said we would bring that to you, and that slipped, so we will bring that to you. We did provide, though, the council by way of an email from me to you on Tuesday, line item details of where we made reductions, and so that has been provided to the council. So Anna's correct. Um, the adjustments don't take effect until January, so we will bring back that additional compensation, um, analysis of the other cities that you pointed out tonight.
Sure.
So I just kind of want to respond to some of that. So of course, we want more police. Of course, we want more firefighters. Of course, we want more public works. Of course, we want more of every staff that we can get. This is not new. We have been behind the curve for at least the last decade, if not 20 plus years. We had a road study, just one example, my favorite example, I know everyone's probably heard me say this before. 2019, we did a pavement condition study that said in 2019, we had over $100 million of road repairs that were needed. In 2019, that was six years ago. We have more roads now that have failed, including my neighborhood. We have both roads, all of the roads in my neighborhood have failed. A lot of roads in other neighborhoods have failed as well that were not in bad condition in 2019. So we probably have double that now, just in roads. That's not sidewalks, that's not water pipes, that's not wastewater, that's not drainage, that's not ditches, that's not water towers, that's not anything else that the city has to pay for. That is just roads. And our annual budget is about 40-ish million in general fund. And I don't remember you, I know you said it earlier, 70?
Total corporation, 72 million. The general fund is 25 million. Your utility fund is about 20 million.
So about 70, let's do easy math, about 75 million. If our road repair budget, just for the roads, only went up 50%, and we're at 150 million, we would have to dump every single dollar, every single dollar, get rid of every single person on staff, magically have this work happen, and it would still take two years of all of our funding to pay for just the roads to be repaired. That's nothing else. That's no other services. We are very, very behind the ball. There is no way for us to just snap our fingers and magically fix that. We have combed through the budget, we have cut as, I mean, I, I find it, I chuckle a little bit because there are things that I proposed to cut from the budget that people fought about keeping. It is what it is. We're a group of seven, almost eight, that all vote. We all have a voice. If I'm, if I'm overvoted or undervoted, whatever, then it is what it is. The group has spoken. There are things that we probably could cut, in my opinion. And I know other people have their opinion on, on things that probably could be cut. When you cut something and you get so down to the wire on such a thin budget, every cut that you make has a massive impact. The impact gets more and more huge the closer you get to the base. When home values decrease, our taxes have to go up. We have had, and again, for decades, Sibolo grew really, really fast. 2005, we had 3,000 people. We're at almost 40,000 now. That is a huge growth. We had a lot of rezoning that was done that should not have been done. We had a lot of residential come in that should not have probably come in. And a lot of the preventative maintenance on our streets and on our infrastructure did not happen the way that it should have been. There was no planning. I wish, again, I wish I could snap my fingers and go back 20 years and have that planning in place. And we can't. We are dealing with it now. We are trying to be more proactive than reactive. And if we cut every single thing, if we cut our parks repairs, like we have for the last 20 years, we haven't done much in parks. If we cut our road repairs again, if we cut our road maintenance again, if we cut these other things again, if we cut our police budget, we're gonna lose staff, we're gonna lose progress on the things that we're fixing. And the longer you wait to fix something, the more expensive it's going to be. Because you can't just mill and overlay some of these roads now. Where you scrape off the top layer, you put on a new top layer. Now you're going to have to dig them all out, like Deer Creek Boulevard. That one is taking forever because we've had to do so much more work on it. Had we gone to Deer Creek Boulevard 10 years ago and done a mill and overlay like we're doing on Silverwing, we wouldn't be in this, in this situation. It would have been much, much less expensive. When our property values decrease, taxes have to go up. It, it is terrible unless we can offset it with economic development. COVID made that very, very difficult. We had a lot of businesses that were planned to come into, into Sibolo into, what is that? Sibolo Crossing. I always forget the name of that one. Sibolo Crossing where Santicos is. There were several businesses that were slated to go in there that didn't show up because COVID hit and they stopped, they stopped building. Salad and Go, Mr. Reed just sent us an article on that. Salad and Go closed on 1103 and we were, we were all very upset that Salad and Go closed. They closed every one of their 41 locations in Texas. Businesses are hurting. This isn't just, unfortunately, it's not just Sibolo that is struggling here. There's another city that is over $100 million in the deficit right now. They still gave a 2% cost of living to their employees. Giving the cost of living is not going to make or break our budget. If we went with our, our old tax rate, we didn't increase it, we didn't even do the no new revenue rate, we kept it at 49, whatever it was, that cost of living, if getting rid of cost of living, isn't going to even make a drip in that bucket of making up the difference. When you lose an employee, when you can't retain an employee, the cost of getting a new employee is so much higher than retaining one that you have. It just, it is. You have to train them, you have to get them up to date on everything. Usually you have to get them new certifications. You have to onboard them. All that time you're onboarding takes time and time is money because you're paying them their hourly rate during that time that they can't work. Police, for example, last year, they gave us a good presentation on how long it takes us to onboard a police officer. It's 12 weeks that they're doing ride-alongs and things like that before they're put out on their own. So that's 12 weeks of training that we're paying for someone that's not able to do the full-time, I mean, I'm sure they could, but they're not able to, according to our policies, do the job on their own as a full-time regular officer. So giving that cost of living, if that helps us retain those employees, in the long run, that does save us money. And it keeps that knowledge on our team. This is all kind of circular, I know. Nobody wants to raise taxes. I don't want to pay taxes. I don't get any fun exemptions. I still work, my husband works, we've got kids in the schools, we're getting hit from all over the place with expenses. I have a kid in college that we're paying cash for. There's a lot of things. I understand. I, I really truly do get it. Nobody wants to raise taxes. Nobody wants to pay more money. The waste, paying more for trash is frustrating, paying more for water is frustrating. I've got four kids that think that they are part fish. Their showers are getting longer and longer. We're going to have to start turn off the water heater or something to get our bill under control. I get it. And we want to try as best as we can to be responsible with the money that we do have in taxes that we are taking in. I think that this budget, staff has shown us that they were willing to make a lot of cuts. They were willing to forego a lot of things that they were, were hoping to do this year. That's been in our strategic plan. That's part of the master plan, that are part of all these plans that we have to be proactive and get Sibolo to where we need to be. And we've had to set those aside yet again because our economy right now and our budget cannot handle it. I, I don't want the public to think that if this tax rate does get increased, that we're all just cheering and screaming and clapping and having a good time. This is not an easy decision. This is not something that we're doing based on our own opinions. I can't speak for everyone, but I've talked to a lot of different people. I've met with people, I've sat down with them. I've pulled out the budget and reviewed the budget with people. I got a bunch of questions. We had people show up to the town hall that were asking questions about the chamber, for example, why are we paying tri-county chamber different amounts? I know, I know other people have asked questions like that. And I know we've made cuts based on those decisions and those questions. This is not an easy thing. This is probably the worst part of the job is having to make these big decisions that do impact everyone in the city. But I think that with the work that's been done and the, the work that the staff has put in, the, the feedback that we've gotten from residents throughout all of the different meetings that we've had over the past several months, the conversations with staff, the conversations with the other people on council during those meetings, and executive staff, and looking at the strategic plan, looking at the master plan, hearing what our committees and commissions and boards are recommending, and the vision that everyone has for Sibolo moving forward. I think that this budget is a sound budget and it will help us get to those goals. A lot more slowly than I'd like to see, but I think it is going to help us take that step and not drag us back several years and put us in a position where we're losing staff again, where we're not, where we're not being able to fill slots in police, where we're not being able to fill slots in fire, where we're not being able to fill slots in public works. So I think in order to move forward, we have, we have to approve this budget.
Organization for this fiscal, organization for this fiscal year, when I started, we were around 23% turnover. And so we have hovered right below 10%, up to 15%, back down to 11%. And as an organization, that's a good retention rate. That's our turnover rate. So that means our retention rate is 89%.
So that means we're getting a return on investment. We're investing in our people, people are staying, which Ms. Cunningham, to your point, we don't have less new hires, we don't have to train them, we don't have to get them out, committed to the way we do business in Sibolo. The fact of the matter is though, we've been increasing the taxes on properties year over year. It's just that the tax rate has dropped because the property value increases. So the reason, and I understand that a lot of people are up in arms, is because the verbiage is a tax rate increase. But it is really no different than what we've been doing the last several years. It's just that now, property taxes on average, or property values on average have dropped. So now we have to increase the rate. But it's the same method that we've done year over year to increase those revenues. This is nothing different. And to Ms. Cunningham's point, we are so far behind in so many areas that we want to do. And, you know, we talk about, we want more staff across all departments, not just our emergency services. We can't do that without money. I would love for everyone in the world just to want to come volunteer in Sibolo, but people have bills to pay, just like the rest of us do. I don't take any tax increase lightly. I'm not tax exempt. I still pay property taxes. So like a lot of folks up here, if this goes, we're voting to increase our own taxes. That's going to be the same burden that everyone else in the city is suffering through. But at the end of the day, we are here to make the right decision, even if it's the unpopular decision. So it's never easy to say, hey, taxpayers, we need more money. But you have to make that tough decision because we know that that is the only way this city can continue to grow and thrive. If we don't pass and we have to take roughly 750,000, whatever the dollar amount is, out, that's a decrease in services that we are supposed to be providing to our citizens. So we can't even sustain the levels of service that we have today if we do not pass a tax rate increase. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'd just like to say also that I do agree very much with Ms. Cunningham. The, it's, we have to invest in our employees. Our associates at the city are our number one asset. And in order to provide the same level of service, unfortunately, we do have to raise the tax rate due to the fact that the property values did decrease. Is an unpopular decision, but to keep the same level of service, that's, that's where we're at. Do I have a motion? Eight A.
Yep.
We'll whoever makes the motion.
Okay.
All right.
Make a motion to approve eight A.
Second.
Nine A, the resolution is required by local government code 102.007C, as shown in the council memo. And it requires that the governing body, separate from the vote on the tax rate and separate from the vote on the budget, ratify a tax increase by resolution.
And there's a suggested motion on your cover sheet.
Make a motion to approve the resolution ratifying the property tax rate increase reflected in the fiscal year 2026 budget.
Motion passes five, two. Next, eight B, approval of ordinance of the city of Sibolo setting the ad valorem tax rate for tax year 2025.
So I would like to remind council, on this cover sheet, you also have a motion. The motion here is a, is a motion that will be done by roll call. It's a record vote. So the motion is suggested here in, on the cover sheet. And then it's a roll call vote. So we don't use the machine. You go around person by person.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of tax rate of .5226, which is effectively a 4.42% increase in the tax rate.
Second.
And roll call vote. Mr. Hicks?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Five, two. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, pro tempore council, thank you for your work across this summer on this budget process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. All in favor?
Aye.